We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Reno County Commission's regular session, May 10th. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a prayer from Pastor Tim Craft of First Church of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Craft?
Thank you. Shall we pray? Precious Lord, we want to give you thanks for another day, another day to live in this great nation in which we are so blessed to live. I find it absolutely amazing that you, the Creator of the world, who sustains everything, are interested in the smallest detail of our lives. What matters to us matters to you. Therefore, I pray then that what matters to you matters to us. You care about this meeting of the Reno County Commissioners. You care about the motives, the decisions, the spending of funds, and most of all, you care about their relationship with you. I pray, Father God, that they be filled with your wisdom and insight to lead and direct this county, and I want to thank you for them. And one more thing, may the conduct of all attending create an environment of cooperation and kindness. This we ask and give you thanks for, in your wonderful name. Amen. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Welcome, everybody, to our meeting today. It's like we have plenty full consent agenda and a few items on the business list. Does anyone here wish to comment for items not on the agenda today? Nope. Okay. Does the Commission have any requests for additions or revisions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Randy, you got anything to speak on?
No, I do not.
Does the Commission have any questions on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Commissioner Sellers, need a moment?
No.
There a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, yes, I do have a question. Well, I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Sellers makes a motion to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Hurst. Discussion, Commissioner Sellers?
Yes, I had a question on the two bridges. And I don't see anybody from public work, so Randy, you have to answer this. Why would one project be 80% of the million-dollar deal and the other would be 90%, but much less than the cost of the bridge? 90% of the cost not to exceed $200,000 when the bridge is costing $528. Why do they make different proportions there?
I don't really have an exact answer. I'm just assuming it's the different grant or how Don's grant came through. It still is getting us more money than us paying 100%.
Well, I understand that. I just, it seemed like it was interesting that the state would pay 80% of the total on one bridge and only, and 90% of a much smaller amount, leaving us a higher percentage on the second one.
Right.
Okay. You might ask Don to just send us an answer to that. Thank you.
Hearing, no other debate on the item. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
And Friesen?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, Business Item 7A, a USI overview of planned performance and strategies to improve performance. Helen is here with HR.
Good morning. My name is Helen Foster. I'm the Reno County HR Director, and I'm going to introduce today Rick Mines. He is from USI. This is our consultant that's helped us through our transition to our new health insurance. So today, he'll be giving you an overview of our performance on our health insurance, how the plan is performing. And he's also going to introduce two new strategies to help our plan's performance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rick.
Thank you. Thanks, Helen. Good morning, everyone. In the packet, I prepared a few slides that talked a little bit about the overall performance. And in the health insurance world, we often compare things on a per-employee, per-month basis. So if you could go to the next slide, page two, there's a financial exhibit. And what we wanted to illustrate here is that if we were to look on a per-employee, per-month basis where you were in 2020 for a number of the components that make up your group health insurance plan compared to where you would have been at your renewal in 2021 without USI as your consultant, and where you are today with USI and your new group health insurance arrangement with BML. So when we go over to the right-hand side, you can see the difference, and green numbers are good. That means they're better than what they were had you just went on this path your own without the partnership with USI. So your administrative costs, you could see if we compare the two middle columns of 2021 Blue Cross without USI versus 2021 BML with USI, those are the two columns that we're really comparing. So you could see your administrative costs went down from 9291 to 4332 and kind of so on. The next column to the right shows you what those per-employee, per-month differences are, where you ended up in a better landscape with your partnership with USI and BML overall. So the switch that we made, when we look at it on a PEPM basis for each of these categories, is a positive change. If you simply wanted to gain an idea on an annualized basis, what the potential savings could be playing out if these PEPMs were to continue throughout the rest of the plan year, you could simply take the monthly difference amounts in the far-right-hand column and multiply each one of those by, multiply each of those by 12, basically, would give you what your savings estimates would be estimated through the rest of the plan year. So the first table is medical and RX. The bottom table is dental. So you could see in our partnership and the decisions we made in moving from Blue Cross to BML in a partnership with USI has been very fruitful. So as you know, when we made the transition from Blue Cross Blue Shield to BML, we implemented a number of different strategies that helped the overall plan save costs. One of them was a switch from the pharmacy benefit manager that Blue Cross had in Prime Therapeutics over to Maxor, which is the pharmacy benefit manager with your new group health plan today in partnership with AroRx, which is a patient-assisted program of high-costing prescription drugs that are covered on the prescription drug benefit side. What we're also proposing as a potential strategy that can help both the member and the county is to implement a strategy to lower cost for those high-costing prescription drugs that are covered on the medical benefit side of the group health insurance plan. And those are going to be infused drugs that are administered in some type of office setting. And what we've done is done a look back, and this is a little, this data's a little bit old. We did a look back from December and January of the current plan year, and were able to identify two instances in which we would, if we were to deploy this strategy, there's a huge opportunity savings for the group health plan. The other thing on the member side is that when this particular strategy is executed, the member has zero out-of-pocket responsibility for those drugs. Since then, since December and January and throughout the plan year, we've identified two more individuals in which the strategy could be implemented. So what we're asking for today is a blessing from the Commission to move forward with this particular strategy in which these two individuals plus another two could provide estimated savings to the plan of a great deal. So this is a pretty low-hanging fruit when you look at these two particular claims that could basically be moved off the group health plan through this patient assistance program and at the same time, provide coverage to the member to where they have zero out-of-pocket responsibility. So now, I will say there's a lot of logistics to that. The way these patient assistance programs work with the drug manufacturers is there's a formal application process, and the assistance has to be approved through that application process. One of the things that's part of the approval in the application process is household income. So if the member makes too much money, then a lot of times, they won't be approved for the assistance. But in 80% of the cases that we see, typically, some type of assistance is approved.
What's the threshold usually?
So, yeah. Typically, for a single, it's usually like around $94,000 a year. For a family of four, you're probably close to $175,000. And that could vary by manufacturer and the ones providing the assistance, but pretty good chance that, you know, the majority of the time, this assistance is going to play out and come through. The next page, we get into an overview of how we're looking at your claims data and identifying the users inside your group health plan that have multiple chronic conditions. If we go to the next page, what this particular chronic disease management program does is it looks at your claims information and identifies the members inside of your population who have one of these, they call them targeted conditions, or one of these chronic conditions and are taking four or more prescription drugs. Once they identify those people through your claims data, they make a proactive outreach to them and let them know that there's a new incentive and benefit available to them if they're willing to engage with a pharma D through Tria Health. And basically, what happens is the pharma D or the pharmacist has a discovery conversation with the member that says, hey, I can see, you know, you have this condition and you're taking these particular drugs. How is everything playing out for you? And through that discovery process, the pharma D can identify that a member may be taking conflicting drugs today, or there's things that their regimen is not playing out like it should be. And at that point in time, what the pharma D then does is make a recommendation first to the prescribing physician of the member with those conditions and to the member simultaneously and say, hey, based on our discovery call, here are some things that we think that could make a better experience or a better treatment regimen for this member. Nothing is made, no drugs are canceled, no recommendations are made to switch drugs or switch regimens immediately. All that is sent back to the primary care physician who's prescribing. Then at that point in time, what we usually see is probably 75% to 85% of the time, the prescribing physician says, well, I didn't know a lot of this was going on. So in his formal opinion, between the conversation between the pharma D and the prescribing physician, they make the decision to change the treatment regimen for the member, let the member know, and then they make the needed changes. If you go to the next slide, this talks a little bit about how you roll out and educate the membership about the new benefit, because the other piece is, is there's just going to be a certain segment of your population where this particular engagement will be happening, and I have a slide that talks about that. But this talks about how the incentive and how the new program is communicated to the membership, and there's also an incentive for the member to engage with the pharma D and have that discovery call and continue to have the discovery call throughout the group health plan. And the incentive could be anything from a gift card, or it could be completely waiving the out-of-pocket cost for those particular maintenance drugs that are treating the member's chronic condition. So it's a win-win-win for everybody, and we'll talk a little bit about what the financials look like on the next slide. So in a look-back analysis, what we were able to see is your average number of plan members was 810. When we talk about plan members, that's everyone who's enrolled in the group health plan. The number of members who are identified inside your group that have one or more of those chronic conditions and are taking four or more prescriptions were 194 members would be qualified to have outreach from the pharma D at Tria Health. On the bottom-left-hand side, you could see how those numbers broke down. You had 68 people with one condition. You had 62 people with two, 31 with three, 21 with four, and 12 with five or more, with each one of those members taking four more medications. What's telling about this slide, if you look over to the right-hand side, you can see for each one of those segments how much that average yearly spend is. And then if you multiply it times the number of the members, basically what we're looking to do is deploy a strategy, not only to help these members with their conditions and their drug maintenance, is also you now have a white-glove approach to addressing these 194 people who are responsible likely for $1.2 billion of your spend. And by having that engagement with them and offering them basically a concierge-type of approach to their care, there's the opportunity to have savings. The next slide talks about kind of what the overall ROI opportunity is. So if we look at all the identified members, there's 194 of those. Basically, the fixed cost fee to have Tria Health administer this arrangement is $5 per employee per month. That investment would basically come out to about $21,000 a year. The incentive spend, meaning that for those who participated, they would have to be incentivized, was about $14,550 estimated. So the projected savings in the very best-case scenario, which means that all 194 people would participate, which is very unlikely, would be $263,000. But if you go all the way to the far right on the 25% engagement, you could see basically that would be 49 people being engaged with the projected savings. You net out the investment, the incentive spend, you're really only saving $50,000, which is about three-to-one return on your actual investment. But in my opinion, when you look at $50,000 as it relates to an overall healthcare budget of $5 million, that's not a lot of money. But at the end of the day, it's how you're actually engaging and making services available to these people who are driving close to $1.2 million of your overall spend. The other thing about the $5 fixed cost is that there's a one-year, one-to-one guarantee on that $21,000, meaning that if the plan's implemented and you don't get the engagement based off of the logistics and the efforts of Tria Health, they write you a check for the difference in fixed cost year one. So on average, 25% year one is what their overall book of business is engaging in this program when it's rolled out. There's a number of municipalities throughout the state of Kansas that have this particular program in place, and they've all had tremendous success and are all very thankful that this type of program is in place.
Is the $5 per employee per month, is that just on the identified members or is that on the whole employee group?
So the charge is based on the 194 people times $5 per employee per month. But, so, yeah, that's what it is. Yeah. And I think that's all of the slides.
How long has your group been associated with this Tria?
Yeah, so USI's been engaged with them probably for the last four years in the market. Prior to my coming to USI, I was with another consultant. I have experience of working with this company for probably close to eight to 10 years. They're actually based out of Overland Park, Kansas, so they're a really good company. They actually are forming a partnership with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas. And then, like I said, there are a number of municipalities in the state of Kansas that are utilizing this program today. The thing I like about it is that it's more of a shotgun approach. You saw on those lists of the actual conditions, you're not just saying, hey, we're just trying to target on diabetes. This is a good way to engage on all of those particular chronic conditions and have some, you know, an actual pharma D engaging with these members.
And your experience through your career is, shows that it works?
Yeah, absolutely. Because, like I said, the averages will show you that that segment of your population of the people who have the chronic conditions and taking four or more scripts are going to be the ones who are mainly responsible for a good majority of the cost of the plan. So this would be the other recommendation that we would encourage to roll out likely at renewal, along with the payer matrix.
And our renewal was when?
October 1st.
You know, we looked at this last year and decided not to do it. I think there was some concerns that it rules out local pharmacies in some manner. You'd have to help me with it.
Yeah, so in visiting with the team here locally, I think there was probably some confusion, in my opinion, or some interpretation that by having these pharmadees consult with these members, that they're going to be steering them away from local pharmacies to fill their drugs that they need, or to change the drug that they're taking today and take it away from being filled at a local pharmacy to another pharmacy, which is absolutely not the case at all. Really, what the program is about is this pharma D having an intimate conversation with someone who has these chronic conditions and evaluating, how are you feeling? What are you taking? Who's prescribing this? Because what we found is there are multiple, these people that have all these different meds are often being prescribed by multiple different people, and one hand doesn't know what the other one's prescribing. So, and it creates a concierge relationship for those people who have that chronic condition or more chronic conditions, taking all these drugs, to when someone's not feeling well, they have a resource to reach out to and help them navigate, you know, this particular instance.
What's your past experience on the number of the percentage that will become engaged?
First year, the majority of the clients that we implement with, it's usually at that 25%. The overall book of business as well for Tria Health is at that 25% engagement level. So first year, our relationship with them, and it's been about spot-on for every single account, it comes in 25%, 26% first-year engagement.
And if I had these chronic conditions, taking more prescriptions than normal people do, the reason I would have this consultation is it would lower my out-of-pocket.
That's right. That's right, to some degree. One of the logistics that we would have to build out further in the strategy is kind of building out what the incentive would look like. You would want to make sure that the incentive is aligned so that people want to have the conversation. If the incentive isn't aligned, then they're not going to do it. In most cases, what we try to do, a lot of those chronic conditions are treated with maintenance drugs, right? Something that you take every day. Those are typically not the highest-costing drugs. So what we often see is the health plan building out an incentive where the majority of the cost of those maintenance drugs are taken care of through an incentive at the point of service. So when they do the engagement with the pharma D, they go to fill their next prescription, it's going to cost them less than it would have in the past because they've engaged with the pharma D, whether that be zero, whether it be significantly reduced.
Well, some of this is beyond me, but with Rick's explanation, I think that we should try both the payer matrix and the Tria Health recommendation.
Commissioner Hurst?
I guess I have, pharmacists are trained to look at the drugs that people purchase from them.
Absolutely.
To me, that's adding another layer where I'm not, I think that our pharmacists here do a great job with regard to looking at prescriptions and seeing if one is countering the other ones, and then they relate that back to the medical doctor. I understand that some people maybe see two or three doctors.
Exactly.
But they're going to buy their prescriptions normally from their own pharmacist. So in that respect, that pharmacist is pretty well-trained to know what those drugs are with regards to their effect upon one another. And so I'm hard to be convinced that going outside to another company that has no clue on who they're dealing with or the pharmacist that's working there, and then make a chance and say that, hey, we can get this mail order from a big company and save money, which we need to, but we need to have the same conversation with that local pharmacist. And so that's my hang-up with going to a pharma D.
Got you.
So, Rick, just to be clear, are there two things we're deciding today?
Or three? Two.
With the pharma D and the infusion drug program?
Yep.
Okay. Can we go back to the beginning on the cost and that one there? So can you tell us in annual terms how much money we saved over the last 12 months total?
So, again, we're in the beginning of this plan year, right? So the data that we have is from October 1st and on this exhibit through February. So what we're doing is taking what the per-employee-per-month cost would be and break it down. So if you look at the far-right-hand column, the 2021 monthly dollar difference with USI, you can see that that's $15,977 a month difference from where we're at today to where you would have been without USI if you renewed with Blue Cross. And that difference is simply 9291 minus 4332, which is 4959, times 322.20 is the 15,000, I believe.
But if I took the $97,825 and multiplied it by 12?
That's correct.
About our savings.
That's where we're trending in our savings. Now, when you do a per-employee-per-month, those numbers are going to fluctuate a little bit, right? Because it's all based on a PEPM, but yes, that's where we're trending for. Now, when I say that, there's components in each of those things. So your admin fees and your stop-loss premium, that's actual fixed cost savings. Those are dollars that you pay every single month. The maximum claims is more of an exposure gap that you've closed because your maximum claims are, you likely won't hit your max. Well, I won't say that, but your maximum claims exposure that you were obligated for if you would have renewed with Blue Cross, with Blue Cross, was $214 more per month than what it is now in renewing with BML and USI.
And then underneath that, you have actual net claims and estimated budget. Is that a separate number?
Yeah, so your actual net claims are based on PEPM net claims amount for what it is from October through February on a PEPM basis at 87618.
So is that just kind of like a one-time number? Like, you wouldn't multiply that by 12, is what I'm asking.
So...
Does it relate to the 97,825?
So the 97,825, that number is what we would consider your maximum exposure, your maximum worst-case liability would be what the admin fee and the stop-loss premium and max claims, that 97,000. Your actual net claims are the claims that the county has funded up to the specific stop-loss deductible level.
I don't understand.
So the maximum claims, the 69 is the maximum exposure, the 38,000, I think is actually what we've paid.
That's right.
So that's the true savings.
What's our savings?
The 38,470 is the true savings to this point, plus the administrative fees. Is that correct, Rick?
So, yeah. So your true savings today on a fixed cost basis is going to be the 15,977 plus the 12, 728 per month. That's the fixed cost. The claim savings would be the 38,477. Your actual net claims are running $119.42 per employee per month, less than what we would guess they would have ran with Blue Cross, if you would have renewed with Blue Cross.
What is the total estimated annual savings for the county?
Okay, so I have an exhibit from that that I have with me that's not in these slides.
Could you just give us a number?
Yep.
What's your cost? What's your cost?
So if we take six months of data and annualize it, that's kind of what we're saying. So if we take six months of data and annualize it based on where you would have been if you renewed with Blue Cross in 2021, does that make sense? Because we have to compare back to something that didn't transpire, right? So your maximum, and I'll compare this in maximum liability terms, worst-case scenario terms, your total estimated annual maximum liability, if you would have renewed with Blue Cross Blue Shield without USI, was $5,498,000. And that's for medical and RX only. Your annualized maximum liability with BML and USI is $4,032,970. Okay, so that differential is $1,465,000. But that's worst-case scenario differences.
So what's best-case scenario?
So best-case, well, best-case scenario is that you wouldn't have any claims, right?
On average.
Okay, so average. So if we look at what we estimated your budget would have been last year with Blue Cross, we estimated that budget would be about $5 million last year.
So it's about a million savings.
But, yes, well, budget is different than your actual maximum exposure, because you don't always set your budget where your exposures are, where your maximum exposure is.
I'm just looking at last year's, okay, so we didn't set it at 5.4 last year.
No, no, so that's what I'm saying. We don't know where you would have set your budget last year because with Blue Cross, because we didn't set our budget from that.
Where are you going to set it this year?
Well, for the current year, we have about a $5,050,000 budget for health insurance. So we'll probably have a small increase just to cover that worst-case scenario.
Because that doesn't work. Like, he's saying we're going to save a million.
Right.
And you're saying we're not going to change the budget.
I could explain that.
Okay.
So the numbers that we just mentioned were maximum exposure, right? So that means if the absolute worst-case scenario happened, that's what the county would be on the hook for. And that's what the $4,032,000 number is estimated.
Well, okay, I understand all that, but like, I think if you just simplify it and say, what are we going to budget next year? I think that's what Randy's saying. He feels comfortable.
Right.
So whatever you're telling him, like, I heard a million four, maybe a million, but I also heard him saying there's a slight increase, like that's.
We don't have the numbers from BML for next year yet. So we don't know what that's going to be. So the budget comes in before the renewal.
But what I'm hearing, Rick, is you haven't convinced Randy that there's any savings.
No, there's savings there in this exhibit that I have provides a little bit better overview of that.
How do you convince him to reduce our budget next year? I mean, it seems like you have the data, but what am I missing?
Keeping enough cash on hand in case the very worst-case scenario, it's really just to have that cash. If something blows up.
The only thing we did is to reduce the cost, and that hasn't happened.
Well, the budget isn't your cost. The budget is a number that's plugged in, and your cost is an actual cost.
But that's what we levy on. I mean, so it hasn't helped the taxpayers yet, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, yes, it has, because the budget is less than what our maximum cost would have been with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we've saved some degree of money.
Well, the theoretical budget, but Randy's saying he's not going to change the actual budget that we use to levy taxes.
Usually we increase it every year for health insurance. This one's relatively flat.
Well, give me that number. Like, what would you increase it had this not happened?
Probably five and a half million, from five million to five and a half million.
So we saved a half million on the budget. Rick, you're making a case for more than that over time. That's what Commissioner Sellers is saying, over time we'll see that.
Okay.
Yeah, and that'll affect the budget in future years as we're, the more we save and we see the pattern, then we'll have the safety and we know we have the.
But we could say from a budget perspective, we're likely going to save a half million, which is almost a mil. And then from an actual cost, over time, we can save a million or more per year.
Okay.
Okay, I get it now, sorry.
That's okay. That helped everybody, I think.
But we're not really looking at our plan today. We're looking at two items that they want to suggest that we include.
This table was introduced beginning, which triggered the conversation. So it sounds like there may be differing opinions on the two.
I've got to, can I go forward with this before we?
Sure.
How much difference there is? Please explain to me how going to Tria is exactly how we're paying X amount of dollars to Tria. Please explain to me how exactly that they're going to save us money.
Yep, no, that's a great question.
Plain and simple.
Okay. Yep, so in those instances when they have consultations with the pharmadee, there are going to be instances where a recommendation is going to be made to the prescribing physician that this person is taking a $5,000 a month drug that is not effective and is making them sick, and the member's just filling it and throwing it in the trash. So that's an instance in where that conversation between the pharmadee and the member has opened up something that I'm filling a drug that costs a health plan $5,000 a month that I'm not taking anymore, but I'm going to the pharmacy and picking it up every month because it makes me feel bad. That's an example. So another example would be conflicting drugs, same type of scenario. They're taking a lot of different drugs that are not making them feel good. The other thing is evaluating the drugs that are being taken, that are being taken, and seeing if it would make sense to evaluate a lower costing alternative drug for the member. The other thing is closing gaps in care. So you may have people who are refusing to fill some of the prescriptions because they're taking five or more of them a month and they can't afford to fund them all. So they're only choosing to fill three of them instead of five of them. So that's going to cause them to be non-compliant. And what we know about non-compliant chronic conditions is in most case, the medical costs for those members may be more costly, three to five to six to one for someone who's compliant. So those are the instances in where you're going to see the claims savings really drive, you know, the opportunity for savings on the health plan. And at the end of the day, the ultimate goal is to provide a resource to these members that they have when they're not feeling well, or they need someone to reach out to, to talk about this. There will be proactive reach out for these discovery calls, because I think it'd be great if every physician knew every single drug that was being prescribed to their patients. But with all these different chronic conditions, you're going to have a number of different specialists probably involved, and they're all prescribing different, you know, drugs. And while our local, any local pharmacy or any local pharmacist is going to have every patient's, you know, health and best interest at heart, many times that could be changing from month to month to month to month.
I'm going to interrupt you a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm willing to try this.
Yep.
Try this, but I want accurate records from your company showing that when it's come times, maybe after six months.
They're saying that they're going to guarantee us at least that 21,000 savings. And I guess I look at this a little differently than you do. We both have family members that are in or have been in the pharmacy business, and so pharmacists are close to you and I. But I think, I believe what Rick is saying, that in this day and age, there's an awful lot of gaps that can occur. And if people are willing to look at their coverage, and maybe it's not just the savings, but maybe we're giving them better healthcare.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, my experience with healthcare costs, you better do what your consultant recommends, because they know a lot more about it than we're ever going to learn about it. And I really think that there's a good case about the doctors might not know, and there's so many bought pharmaceuticals over the mail and so forth, that this makes sense to me, Ron, and I don't see that we've got a negative, because they're guaranteeing us to break even.
I want to try it.
If we would help, they're suggesting 49 people might do this consulting next year. If we help 10 of them be healthier, we've done a service to our employees. So I'm very much for trying this for you.
So, Rick, tell us the two programs, just what are they?
The first one is payer matrix.
Okay.
And then what's the second one? Tria Health.
Have we worked through any situations that everybody's getting along pretty good with understanding how the system works, or are we still working on that?
Still working.
Can we, Commissioner Hurst, can we dispose of this item first, and then?
Okay.
I think your point of checking in on the general stuff is good.
All right.
So would you prefer to do them separate, or are you ready to do them?
Ready to do them.
Would you make that motion to approve, or would you like, Commissioner Sellers? Would you make the motion to approve the payer matrix and the Tria Health?
I would make the motion that we approve the proposal for implementing payer matrix as an option for the county, and at the same time, I would approve the proposal for implementing Tria Health as an option for the county. And I believe both of these would be effective at the October renewal.
Yes.
I'll second that. Any other discussion on that item?
I appreciate the information that you've given and the description.
Sellers, you good? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
So, Commissioner Hurst, do you want to ask your question again, just checking in on the status of the overall plan?
Yeah, I do. I don't know who wants to handle this or whether you both want to handle this, but describe the situation and how we're doing with understanding a new program and the situation involved and how it's working out with employees.
Go ahead.
We've had, you know, we've had a lot of hiccups with communication amongst all of the different benefits that we have in place. BML has gone through a lot of change, and that's pretty much 100% of our problem right there. However, I think, you know, we're starting to work through some of that. This week was positive change in that avenue. For whatever reason, they've got some new people in place and things are rolling a little better. So I think we're starting to see things smooth out. It's been pretty rough, but, you know, six months in, and now things are starting to resolve.
So that's been the company that you were working with's problems?
BML, yeah. So they had a terrible amount of turnover. And so when they brought in new people to fill those positions, they were brand new to TPA business, so not really well-versed in that. And they didn't have the staff that they needed to man a lot of the areas of BML to take care of our plan. Now, it seems like we've got some better people in place, and those people are communicating better, and so we're starting to have resolve.
Thank you. Randy, would it be reasonable to ask if we had a very simple survey that went out to employees that gauged their satisfaction with the program? And then maybe we can, it sounds like there may be less than optimal today, and that we're working on it. Maybe we could try to drive towards a higher satisfaction rate?
But aren't we maybe a little early to do that? Because we're just halfway through a new program, and new programs are hard for employees. I've dealt with this in my career, and to ask this quickly, I think is, you know the answer you're going to get.
Well, actually, I think it establishes a baseline to where if you show improvement, I think that's the best thing we can show. And if, you know, if it's really, really bad, like, it's actually a little easier to show improvement than if you gauge it.
I think maybe, I think, I see where you're coming from, Commissioner, but I think maybe 30 days from now or 60 days from now might be a better survey, and you could say, and including in that survey, how was it to start with and where are we now? And that could cover both things at once.
Okay. How about we do this? How about we let Randy decide when he wants to gauge the employees and report back?
Thank you.
Okay. That sounds great. Any other questions on this item? Okay. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Helen, are you back up here for the compensation policy?
I am. Good morning. The compensation policy is just the formalized version of what Phil presented to you in his wage survey. The highlights are outlining the methodology and the way our salaries are arranged, as well as promotions. Any kind of position changes are outlined in this policy. It does introduce shift differential and the pay-for-performance. So those are brand-new to Reno County. The shift differential does not have a budgetary impact. It will be absorbed by the personnel budgets. So it's already budgeted amount, or budgeted money, and departments will be responsible for absorbing that. Pay-for-performance, we have kind of changed the evaluation schedule. So it used to be October 31st was when annual evaluations were due. We will change that to where they're due at the end of each year. That way, HR has enough time to process it. And then we will implement pay-for-performance or merit increases in April if they're approved. Does anybody have any questions about some of the information outlined in here?
Yes, Helman, I've read the part about annual pay-for-performance increases if authorized several times, and can you maybe explain it differently? I'm not understanding what you're doing here. I can't get your document. It talks about no less than 2% of department wages, less department head wages. I don't understand.
So it is taking the amount of wage.
Let's say he makes 100 bucks.
Right. And so you're putting all your employees together for a department, and whatever that budget is for your personnel cost, it would be 2% of that would be allotted for merit.
And so that department head has 2% to work with among that employee group?
Correct. Department heads are separated, though, and they're in their own group, but yes, that is correct. And so based on pay-for-performance, employees would get, they might get a small merit increase. Everybody will get a little something, but your higher performers are going to get a larger amount of that pot.
Of that 2% of the total.
Yes.
You said everybody would get something?
Yeah, even your low performers. The way the system works, even the low performers would get something, it's just not very much. I mean, it might be 30 cents. It's not very much.
But why should a low performer get any merit increase?
It's just the way the system breaks it out. That's how Phil's system works. But yeah, even your, now below standard would not. But yeah, even your, even your, now below standard would not. Somebody who's below would not. But you've got somebody that's right at standard. They're going to get a very small. Your higher performers are going to be the ones that get the larger.
Do heads understand how to do this and make it effective? It sounds like it's a common...
That will be training. We will have training on that.
Okay, is this something that we've done in the past in a similar way? No?
No, we've only done step increases. So step increases accounted for 3%. So anytime step increases were implemented, that was a 3% increase for everybody across the board. Unless they had a below-standard review. If they had a below-standard review, then they had to wait until, they were placed on a probation. And then once they brought their review up to a standard or above, then they could have their merit increase.
Okay, so the part of this, this is a document setting commission policy, correct? Reno County policy?
It's policy, but like, even for the percentages that are the recommendations, those are based on budgets that are approved. So those are setting up guidelines of, here's the hope or the intent to every year have a COLA and then pay-for-performance pools. But as you look, the commission has the authority to adjust or reduce the recommendations below to achieve expected budget performance. So those could be pulled out every year if the budgets are in bad, if the economy's in bad condition.
So your budget coming to us this year will have two line items, one for performance increases and one for a potential COLA increase?
Yes.
And the commission at that point in time would have the ability to say, we agree?
Yes.
A better understanding now. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I was kind of of the same opinion as Commissioner Sellers. Makes me a little nervous to put this in writing.
Well, I think, I was too, Mr. Chairman. But if the commission has the ability to approve these recommendations by the manager, by the administrator at budget time, I think that's a good check and balance to the system. And just from where I sit, the merit increases would deserve a higher consideration than the COLA increases, if you had to pick one over the other. And they're saying here that the commission can agree or not agree with the budget, so...
And that was our intent, to not tie your hands, but to give kind of a recommendation.
I think it's good to have this in a document. So I'm not against, I did have trouble reading it, so...
I like the performance part of it. If implemented correctly.
Yeah, I think you talk about it, you're going to have some training sessions with the department heads.
We are. We're going to have some training. There is, and Phil introduced us to this. It's a software program that, it sets the workflow for this. It's really, really slick. And it would make it to where we could do our pay-for-performance very easy, because it would automatically calculate all those increases for us. So, and that software was quoted at, was it 21, 21, 30, 21,300 annually? And that would be for, based on our employee count.
What all is, who all are involved in the training? Is that department heads?
It will be anybody who would be responsible for a performance evaluation. Because one of the things that we want to, we want to talk about, and Phil's going to help with this training, is to make sure that they, they know they can't game the evaluations. And he's going to show them, they can try to game them, but you can't game them.
And there will be ample education to all the employees to know how this is going to work.
Yes, and hopefully, most department heads have already had this conversation with their employees. Most employees that I've talked to understand that we are moving to the pay-for-performance.
What do you mean by gaming the system?
Meaning they're, they're trying to see if they can get certain people increases based on who it is. So Phil will show them that even if they try to do that, the system is, the system has some measures in place that they're not able to do that because of the weights. The weights involved on the scoring is going to make that near impossible for them to, to game that. Because certain criteria will be weighted different.
Have we reviewed this? There's a lot of drug policy in there, like, from a law perspective.
The employee, the compensation? Is that what you're talking about?
Maybe I was scrolling too far. Is there, is there drug policy?
There are. They were on the consent agenda, the drug and EAP policies.
Okay, I already approved those, sorry. This is, this is slightly out of order. But the, one thing I've mentioned before, Randy, that I think would be great on items like this that are kind of all-encompassing, if you could, in the agenda item, indicate your approval, as well as legal indicate their approval, like, on the, on the header. I don't know if the other two commissioners would approve or agree to that. But on the agenda item, for issues like this, it's just, I think, good for you guys to show you bought into it, too.
Most of the time, items don't get on the agenda until any contract or agreement has already gone through Patrick. And it doesn't get my approval. It gets my approval in the system to put it on the agenda. But if you want us to mark it somewhere...
I think it's just...
I think your point's well-made, that it shows us that it's gone through, and stamped.
I guess, Commissioner Friesen, on this, you know, I scroll, I always read the agendas when I get to them and look for things that I think might have a legal aspect to them if it's new. This is mostly financial and, you know, your guys' other people's territory than mine. What I do like about it is that it has a, I guess, my pet peeve from the law side is when employees get raises right before the, and then you find out that the department head is actually scheduling that employee for a dismissal or demotion. And this seems to take that into account, where they're, I like that the COLA is separate from the merit, which means if an employee gets a raise before they get terminated or demoted, they can't claim that they were given a raise for good performance. So I like that aspect of it. And I think in terms of getting the department heads to do a better job actually doing those reviews, those are really important from legal. So I think, other than the money, which is your guys' department, I think the policies are good.
And my point, like, I don't want to, like, create, you know, inefficient work. But material items like policy, if we can see, you know, even before it comes to the agenda, that legal and the administrator, you know, it could be as simple as just administration approves, legal approves. And it's just a nice indication that it's gone through that review process, so. Looks like we need approval on this today.
Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve the compensation policy as presented.
Commissioner Sellers moves?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hurst. Any final discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Thanks, Helen.
Thank you.
I think we have item 7C. Harlan is here with the architect for the Reno County Courthouse space renovation.
Yes, good morning. Harlan Pugh, Director of Maintenance and Purchasing. As you're aware, over the last couple of years and now, I guess, we've been looking at space utilization within the courthouse, some needs for additional space for some departments as things have, and operations have evolved. So GLMV came on board to do, conduct that space study and to come up with some conceptual designs for what we can do to meet those needs, including an expanded area for commission meetings, as well as additional space for the district attorney's office. And then those are the two major components of this. But nearly every department within the courthouse would be impacted in one way or another, some more than others. But anyway, this proposal would be for GLMV to proceed forward with the final design and bid documents to put that project out to bid.
Questions for Harlan? Randy, you got anything to add to that?
Just that GLMV will, along with this project, they'll continue to work with all the departments and agencies that are in the courthouse, go through one more time before putting bids out, or documents out for bidding, to make sure that we've covered every aspect of the building that needs to be covered with this. Or, so that we don't, you know, forget a department or an agency in the process.
What amount of time are we anticipating to get to the bid process?
Brad Dodden, GLMV?
We would think that the packaging, if it's done in its entirety, with the programming efforts that we'd want to make sure that we've nailed down the requirements for the departments that we're going to be working with, we should be able to have that out in a eight-month period of time. At the maximum, I think we could have that sooner. It just, there's variables involved in as to how much the programming, nailing down the programming process would take with the departments, making sure that we've got the district attorney's offices configured in the way that we want to. There's been other spaces that have been introduced that we want to make sure that we've accommodated those as well.
I heard you say eight months?
Eight months.
Well, I'm disappointed in that number. We owe it to the district attorney to get the fifth floor taken care of. And to me, and maybe it's just me on this one, but we also owe it to a five-member commission to have a commission room that fits five members and has 40 chairs for audience. This room has been filled numerous times this spring with people, and not enough chairs to sit in. And if it's going to take eight months to even get to bid, we're not going to be ready for the new commission. So that's disappointing to me, but that's the best we can do. Maybe it's the county's fault that we haven't moved on this faster.
Part of the process that is indicated in our proposal is also creating renderings for your approval process so that we can see what the space is going to look like prior to that. And so that's just another variable that we throw into that to make sure that we've had everybody sign off on it, and it's what you want to move forward with.
Well, in defense of your eight months, I guess, and I don't know the project in detail, but I know that there's some changes that we've considered throughout this, these months of having your original concepts that seem to be improvements to those concepts. And so that's good that we're efficiently doing the best we can with this space. I'm all for the project, and I hope that our budget will afford the project. We know that we're going to need some outside space for the county in the future. And the health department needs additional space. Emergency management needs additional space. But I think it's, it's important to me, at least as a commissioner, that we use the space within the courthouse in its entirety as well as we can. And I think this, this program will, if we do a good job working with the architect on this, we'll better use our space within the courthouse, which is our main building for the county, and in my opinion, should continue to be the main building.
We have long talked, over the years, about how to efficiently use the courthouse. We have a structure there, a very good structure. We're improving right now with upkeep that needed to be done. Regular maintenance that will last for years. We know that we drastically need that DA's space up there to do their job efficiently and to attract other attorneys. On the same hand, it costs a lot of money. And one thing that I would say, I wish we could speed this up a little bit. On the same hand, I don't want you to make a mistake and come back and that construction guy says, oh, they didn't plan on this, so this is going to be another $100,000. Now, cost overrun to me is just poor planning. I understand a few items that you just come up at the last instance. But I don't, I don't want to see those cost overruns. I'm not a very good fan of that. And at some point in time, we shouldn't be responsible for mistakes that other people make. And we need to use, we need to use this space. We have it. The structure is there, and we just need to have it.
One other thing I would mention, or maybe a couple, but I am pleased with the amount of engagement that has been shown by the departments within the building. And that's one of the reasons, I think, that it's taken as long as it has to get to this point, is multiple conversations with everybody. The opportunity for them to review the initial conceptual designs and then go back and modify those and make some changes. And at this point, I'm pretty confident that everybody that's going to be impacted by this is happy with, with what they're seeing. So how that ties into going forward, I believe, is if Brad and his team can proceed, have, have some brief conversations and go over what, what is being proposed conceptually, if that's all agreed upon and they can just keep moving on it, I think that timeline on their work will, will shorten up. But I also think it's important that, that we get buy-in and sign-off from everybody involved along the way so that we do end up with a project that, that does work and works for the long term. So hopefully, that will go quickly because of all the groundwork that's gone into it so far.
Very good point. Harlan, if, if we are to just go ahead and take the information that we've gathered today, which is significant, and just start creating schematic drawing, schematic drawings, it would accelerate the programming part of it significantly. And so with that, happy to work with that.
I think there needs to be some time limits on this.
No, I think we ought to just say, do the best you can. And if you can beat the eight months and do it well, fine. You can't start the other construction until the dome's done. And who knows when the dome will be done? So it's, eight months might be a short period of time. I would make the motion that we approve the agreement with GLMV per their document.
Second motion, the second. So... I've told Randy this, I've probably told you, I'm a little nervous about, you know, the general status of the courthouse and its ability to be a long-term home for some of the departments. I 100% agree on the point that DA needs more space and we're obligated to provide it, and we ought to do that as quickly as possible. So I don't, I don't have concern about that. The commission chambers worry me a little bit in that it, I think we should determine whether it can be used for other purposes, number one. There's only three commissioners on this design, too. Hopefully, that isn't going to be a problem.
We kept that in the back of our mind as when we found out about it, the change. And so we'll have to expand that assembly space, but it's a matter of expanding the number of panels that we're going to be enclosing it with.
I guess that's really the most concerning out of all of it, is the panels look kind of like a, you know, you're going to walk into a cubicle station area.
But we addressed that with the architect early on, didn't we, to look at some, a different approach towards those panels?
There are options, and we can propose different options. We can have, if we want to add more wood to the panels.
That was probably done, Daniel, before you were on the commission, time-wise.
I've got, I got this from July. I really don't like, I don't know how much the, do you know how much the commission chambers is going to cost?
I don't have that fronted up. The panels themselves, I think, are approaching a half a million dollars.
No, not.
There's a 500, FFNE, there's a FFNE line item in our proposal. That would include all of the furnishings. Well, I take that back. We have furnishings in all other departments as well. Never mind, I take, yeah, that's for the entire, the entire package.
So there's, on this, I see a cost at one point, 1.18. This is the mezzanine walkway fit for renovation and new commission and meeting.
Okay, commission mezzanine, floorway, commission meeting, first floor remodel. Can you scroll down just a little bit more at the bottom of there?
Okay, we're at 1.6 now. So I got 1.1 here, that was last year. This is 1.6.
So there is a, the FFNE, that would include all of the furnishings for this entire project. It would include the panels, which would enclose the commissioner's assembly space. And so I don't have that broken out, what those panels are.
Like, I think this space is okay. I mean, it's not the most, you know, regal of spaces, but it does the job. Yeah, it does the job for, for two meetings a month. And so, like, I appreciate, you know, the idea of, you know, remodeling the courthouse. But I'm worried, like, I like to see any dollar that's going to be used every day in some way. And so, like, I wouldn't doubt if that paneling's going to cost half a million dollars, like you said. And that, I don't think it looks great to begin with. And then you add the fact that we're going to use it twice a month, like, it bothers me. I don't know what to do, other than this space is okay.
I have a tendency to agree with you until I know the exact cost of that. I realize we want to use that space, but surely, over time, we can find a place or way to use that space in the main courthouse floor. And we do have, and I agree with you, Daniel, we can do have here, that would save, until that's broken out by itself with a known figure, I'm not sure that we, yes, it would be nice, but nice is not always the best interest of taxpayers' minds. And I think we could make this room work. We already have the electronics in here. I think we've got enough room by moving panels around. So I think Commissioner Friesen, you have, bring up a very good point to look at.
Is there, is there a way to, like, it just seems like that open area is still highly inefficient, as far as its utilization of space? And is it all because of the historical register requirements?
There, that impacts what we can do in there. The space is a two-story open volume space, and so it lends itself toward assembly because of that openness to it. We just felt that that assembly, it lending itself to assembly would make sense to put an assembly space for the commissioners to.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question, and please don't infer what my opinion is on it, but if, is it legally required to maintain the historical, like, what happens if you don't do that?
We are, it's on the federal and the state historic registers, which requires the building be maintained accordingly whenever renovations are going on. And so renovations that take place, we have to log that with the state and the federal.
And if you do something that they don't agree with, what happens?
I worked with a project in Emporia, and the, getting the people renovating this school on the register didn't like, didn't want to comply with what they were requiring.
Yeah.
And so they did what they wanted to do, and there were fines and penalties that I don't, I'm not privy to what was actually being, what was going on, but there were negative consequences for the contractor that, who was developing this building himself. And so the project ultimately came to a stop because he was not able to finish it, but I don't know what the extent of the ramifications were.
Isn't it also true, and I don't know how much it costs, that you can take, you can request that, say, the interior and the exterior, one or the other or both can be taken off of the register? You know, could you, could you do just say the first two floors of the open area, request that those be taken off the register? I mean, I'm just bringing this up as questions.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I'm there.
But I would make the case that you're both wrong, even considering taking away from the majesty of our courthouse, and that we should do things to, to make it look like it is, and to develop on that a look, and not do things to take away and put.
I'm not arguing with that fact, but I just think we hit, we need to look at options, okay?
You should come, you should come visit our office sometime in Beulah, because it's an old, gray.
I was in the front door looking for you one day, and you weren't there, so I didn't see you.
Somebody said, one of the commissioners.
Maybe you should invite me again.
But, like, you can respect history.
I think, okay, that's my point. Let's respect history and do the things that we need to do inside to make it work.
But there's, I think there's a middle ground between the Historical Society's requirements and the responsibility we have to the taxpayer.
I wouldn't say that, but it's not true.
Well, okay. I would like, if, and let me, let me make sure, let me try to move this along, okay? So I think we're all in agreement that absolutely we need to get going on the DA work, perhaps even the periphery remodel. I think the only thing up for debate here is the commission chambers, the middle area, right?
Part of, yeah, but I, I think we need to.
Chairman, I made a motion, I don't know whether there was a second, but.
There was.
I second that. And I think by going forward with this, we can then decide, tell me if I'm wrong, we can decide if, okay, it's going to cost too much money, so we're going to have to drop this section out? Is that correct, sir?
That is, yes.
We're going to pay for it if we drop it out, but.
Yeah, I suppose that, I mean, we're talking about $105,000 approval today.
Yes, yes, the architect for.
So if we took a part out, it would change it 20%.
Is that a fixed fee?
If it goes up another $100,000?
That's 108,000. That's, that's, that's a fixed fee. Inflation wouldn't affect our fee.
Okay.
But inflation would affect the construction cost.
Well, so I guess just part of the record, I'm not terribly excited about spending $1.6 million on the courthouse. I think it's going to be 2.5 by the time we're done. So, but I think the points here with, we got to find out what it is, and we do have an obligation to provide space. And your point, Commissioner Hirst, like, all we're doing today is approving the design, as expensive as that is, I think it's an important step. So, okay. Let's get that motion off, let's vote on it, if that's okay? I've got a couple other questions on that, so roll call on the motion, please.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
So I think, it sounds like, and may, correct me if I'm wrong, commissioners, but it sounds like there's a lot of interest in how the plan and the recommendations progress, and maybe we could have kind of, you know, monthly updates on progress and see if we can find a better consensus on where we're going, because there's not super-great consensus on the, and that may lend itself to, like, options in your proposal, I think that might help, Commissioner. But is that fair?
Well, it would seem like to me that, knowing the different elements of this overall project, that when he puts the request for a bid together, I think we can separate those things and have a total amount, and then a deduct if you decide not to do X and so forth, so you'll know those amounts. The architect and I talked briefly this morning, and he felt that if we would give him, here as this discussion goes along, the priority, what the most priority is, that that would be helpful in there, putting this out to bid. And I think if, in the next month or 45 days after your meetings, if you bring that concept back to us, we could then debate, and I think we'll agree that the fifth floor is item number one, and from there, we might disagree. But I think it would be in the architect's best interest to know the priorities that the commission feels are the strongest per use of the money.
And I think, I like, I'm in agreement with that, because I don't think it's going to change the cost of anything, because they're so, the fifth floor is a distinct effort by itself.
It is.
And then the rest are, so one bid shouldn't, the estimate of cost shouldn't make much difference depending upon the areas, right?
The project is easily compartmentalized into different aspects. We have the assembly space on the first floor, we have the district attorney's space on the fifth floor, and all of the associated circulation and accessibility required there. And then we have the, the accessibility to the mezzanine, you know, connectivity of that. And then you have the miscellaneous reallocations of spaces, you know, kind of throughout the facility as well, that is kind of another component of this.
So, does it change your scope of work to expedite the fifth floor work separately, so you could do that?
We can start that immediately. We have, we already have some preliminary concept, at least, you know, as we are talking, programming that space. So we could start with that immediately.
That sounds good. I just might mention, and I'm, I have no qualifications to say this, but the existing fifth floor area, like, the, I think something has to be done with the ceiling, and it's like capturing moisture or something, like, there's been continual complaints up there, and it seems like that is the issue.
Are you talking about the finished, the finished?
I think it's drop ceiling, isn't it? Like, if you take that out and just let it air out for a while, I would guess, like, that's, like, I think that needs to be addressed. The, the fifth floor as a whole, so we don't have this brand-new space, and then we have the water problem, something you're referring to.
Chairman, the majority of that is, is the result of issues with the dome that are being corrected right now?
Well, and that, um, Stanton's monthly report indicate that it's improving greatly up there, both the smell and the water conditions are improving with the dome situation.
I think that, that ceiling and the dome don't mix, but I'm not an expert.
Well, it does. The dome has been leaking down into the fifth floor.
Well, okay. What, this talks about historic tax credits, like, what, what are those? How do we get them?
We can file for those with the state historic preservation people and file for those credits. But we, we will be filing for the, we will produce the documents and submit them with the part one, part two.
How does, how does that work? Like, how much are they?
I would have to go ask them to see what is available for.
I can address that one. So the, the way they work is if, if the, the costs are approved and the plan is approved by the Kansas State Historical Society, then, once the project is done and paid for, then, then we file the final paperwork and we get tax, income tax credits at 40% of the cost of the project. So once we get those, then typically, those are put out to bid, since we don't really have any use for income taxes. But we sell those tax credits typically at somewhere between 80 and 90 to even a little higher percent. Individuals, corporations can purchase those, and we've never really had any problems, you know, getting rid of them. On this particular project, I don't know how much is going to qualify, because a lot of this is going to be peripheral and cosmetic-type parts of the scope. So, like, with the, with the, the project that's happening currently at the courthouse, almost all of the costs that the county is responsible for will qualify. On the remodel, it may be a lower percentage of those costs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Can we ask the question, I think Commissioner Hirst's question of, can you, can you remove the second floor interior from historical register?
Yeah, I asked Shonda while we were talking to get her, to help me get my hands on what documents the county went through to get that registered in the first place, because that will help me answer some legal questions as to what were, what options might exist on it. So I, as this will probably continue to be a, I mean, I think the historical nature of the courthouse will be a continual discussion for forever. I'll find out more and be ready to talk about that.
Thanks. Okay, Kim, you want to take a five-minute break, or you want to keep going?
Up to you.
Megan, you got a presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
I won't say.
Hundred different signatures.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to give the annual update for the solid waste department. An overview, we've been, one of the busiest years we've had in the last five years out of the landfill. I will mention, the open house we had a couple weeks ago was very well-attended. I think we had well over a hundred and, a hundred and twenty citizens. There was department heads, employees from the county that came out that day. A lot of citizens asked questions about the reused building, the recycling we do out there, kind of how our procedure works, and I think it was well-responded to have that open house for everybody. So a few of the projects that we have been working on in the past year, we have our cell eight, which will be going out for bid this summer. It's a ten point-two acre cell. We've been work, doing all of the dirt work, which saves the county hundreds of thousands of dollars on the dirt excavation, on, on getting ready for that cell construction. Obviously, we've had our new facilities, we did all of the dirt work excavation for it as well, opened those facilities up on February the fourteenth. We also completed our cell seven gas well installations that is required by Kansas Department of Health and Environment. That was completed at the end of 2021, and it tied in our two gas systems that we've got to into one system on Site D. And then for the upcoming, like I said, in 2022, for this year, we will be going out for bid for our cell eight construction by the end of the summer, for construction to begin in the fall. We also need to look at demolitioning of the old scale house and the septic system that's running over there and the old household hazardous waste area. There are some buildings there that we're gonna, we're gonna reuse on site. The dirt work also for the sheriff's department gun range is going to begin here soon. Then, we were waiting on some GPS equipment on our mortar graders to get updated, so we could get over there and start the gun range procedure. Right now, it's busy time for spring cleanups. We've had the spring cleanups in the areas around here. City of Hutch just ran theirs about a week ago, and the numbers that I had for spring cleanup for, for this year so far was a hundred and twenty-two tons of material, but they had not brought in all of the roll-off containers from the city when I had to do our report. There is additionally areas, citywide spring cleanups in the cities of Haven and Arlington and Beulah, which also, we have our household hazardous waste reuse, our trailer that we send out to all those communities. It allows the citizens of those towns to be able to bring in used oil, paint, chemicals, anything that we can take in our household hazardous waste facility. And our technician, Jim Howey, did tell me yesterday that the city of Beulah was double this year what it was last year for household hazardous waste cleanup material, which was a good thing.
I saw it Saturday, and your trailer was here, and there was stuff piled-
Full.
Out of the trailer.
He said they kind of went above and beyond him for putting brush and things that weren't supposed to, but as far as the household hazardous waste, it was double what it was last year.
You think Beulah has more hazardous waste?
Maybe.
That might be.
I wanted to give you guys kind of an update on the cottonwood complex fire, the materials that we did receive in over that timeframe of the month of March and the month of April. We separated out, you know, anything that has been burnt in a fire besides brush has to be taken to our municipal solid waste area in the pit. So we broke those totals up, and normally, KDAG requires the solid waste department to pay one dollar per ton for every ton that comes in for trash or construction demo. They did waive that fee with this disaster from the cottonwood fire, so we did not have to pay the dollar per ton in those couple of months that we were receiving material in. But the month of March, we received over seven hundred and twenty-one point six five tons of municipal solid waste, and then for brush, we received thirteen point seven five. In the month of April, we received in MSW, six hundred and thirty-three point five six tons, and brush was seventy-seven point one eight. I know that we've received a few here and there loads that are still coming in of people cleaning up, but for the majority, I think that the cleanup for, for us to be receiving material in bulk is probably over, or close to being over. On our household hazardous waste, I wanted to give you guys kind of an update on it. We, in the year of 2021, we received over sixty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-two pounds of household hazardous waste material. It was placed in our reused building for the public to be able to use. So I know if you haven't been out there lately, it's pretty full right now, so if you need any paint, there's plenty of paint to be, to be received. We recycled six thousand four hundred and fifty-two gallons of used oil, it was sent off to be recycled. There was six point five tons of batteries that were picked up for recycling in '21. We did recycle nine hundred and forty-three tons of metal, and we do, Reno County Solid Waste does receive a, a payment from recycling company here in Town Local that we receive on metal prices, whenever the market is. And then with Hutch Correctional Facility, we do have the program with them on our mattress recycling, and we recycled over seventy-seven point eight eight tons of mattresses at the prison. On this sheet, I just wanted to give you guys kind of an overview. We do receive tires, and we only charge commercial businesses for those tires. Residents of Reno County get to bring tires out at no charge. So I just wanted to break things out on the, the metal and white goods, kind of through the years, from '20 to '22, of the revenues that we received, you can kind of tell where metal was, was up last year, so it was good revenue for us. Tires, you know, the cost to, to get rid of those tires, it goes up every year, so it kind of shows you what we pay out and what we receive in. And then on mattresses, I wanted to give you guys kind of a, a couple-year overview on mattresses for recycling in our HHW.
Why is that down?
Which, which is that?
Mattresses?
I don't know. I don't know if everybody's getting enough-
That would be, that would be year-to-date.
Yes, on '22, yeah. I just, I just did through the month of April on the mattresses. Household hazardous waste, it kind of breaks things down on Clean Harbors is a company with Safety Clean that picks up all the recyclables that we cannot reuse, so oil we send off to be recycled, and then anything that is not in its original container that cannot be used in our reused building, we have to send that off. We used to budget almost seventy-five thousand dollars for household hazardous waste material to be sent off, and we actually have reduced that cost, and you can see the amount that we pay every year, it's drastically went down on those costs. The next few slides, I wanted to just give some tonnage reports, some of what was, is received in and out. The first, this slide is the total amount for all Reno County and our contracted counties we receive in, for the total amount of tonnage that is received. And I did include 2022 through the month of April on these tonnages as well, but you can kind of see, in 2020, when COVID hit, it really kind of jumped up a little more than the other years on tonnages. They're out-of-counties, they've stayed pretty consistent and pretty steady, we haven't really seen too much of an increase on those.
Megan, I, I think your report's excellent, and I appreciate all the charts and information, but I'd like to ask a question on this in-and-out tonnage, page two, two twelve, which is up there on the screen now. Why do you suggest that two, 2021 is seventeen percent less tonnage than 2020? That, that surprises me, because I would think that what, in your business, every year's gonna grow.
Yeah. 2020, I believe, was, was when COVID hit and everybody was really at home, and cleaning things out, we were extremely busy.
So you can visualize that on a daily basis?
Yeah, yeah, so-
People were cleaning up?
We run a number on our program, how many tickets we run a day, so on an average, and how many tonnages we run every day. And, so, I'll give you, for instance, a couple weeks ago on a Saturday, they ran almost close to seven hundred tickets, which was a lot. But on an average, it's anywhere between, you know, during the week, it's no two fifty to three hundred tickets, weekends, of course, are closer to the four to five hundred tickets. So we can kind of see a trend of what's going on and, and what people are doing with that material.
That's interesting.
Yeah. And I, having a couple of different slides, I was gonna do comparisons, I'll show you two.
But 2021 was even less than 2019?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, we weigh, I mean, everything comes across the scale.
Got rid of everything in 20.
Beulah must have been there.
The next slide is just municipal solid waste, so that's just your household trash that, that gets brought out by your haulers or, or your own individual self. Kind of shows the same numbers. These totals, these totals are for out-of-county and Reno County together, so you'll have to look through, and just kind of gives you a, an amount, which is different from the chart you just seen before, this is just trash only. And same with construction demolition, we do not receive a whole lot of out-of-county, they, most of our contracted counties, they have construction demolition sites, so Rice County, Harvey County, McPherson, Kingman, they all mostly have their own construction demolition sites. So this is pretty much just Reno County with construction demolition costs, or tonnages, I'm sorry. Compost is another one that, that is, we do receive quite a bit in, we do reuse it on site. I do get a lot of phone calls if we do sell our compost, there are other facilities that do resell compost for people's gardens, or, you know, whatever the case might be. We do use ours on site for erosion control on our slopes, and that type of material is really good for, for taking care of those, with, when the rainy season comes and keeps good care of the erosion. Brush is another one that we receive quite a bit in. We do burn our brush every day if we can, if the winds don't allow it, or if we've got a burning man in place, we have to wait till we can say we can do that, but we have a brush site in place for that, to be able to accept brush in from Reno County citizens. The next one I'll show, Mr. Sellers asked me this question when he came out to the open house, or another time he came to visit. So now that we have two scales, we are able to kind of see what everybody weighs exactly in and out. Before, we had just the one in and out, just one scale, we asked people to return for empty weights when they come across, and we used to give empty weight cards out, so we were kind of interested to see as well where our tonnages landed from years prior to this year. So you can tell, we only had, since we just moved in February fourteenth, I just did the months of March and April so far. But by looking at it, we were pretty close to where we were at on our tonnages for in-and-outs with this year of 2022, as far as of totals that come into the landfill, so.
What does that mean?
So what that means is, the concern was, and Mr. Sellers, Sellers and I talked, that dollar per ton we pay to the state, we were kind of thinking, well, hopefully, we weren't underestimating weights that came in, if you didn't come, say you came and brought a load to the landfill, and we asked you to come back for an empty weight when we had only one scale. A lot of people didn't come back, they'd go on the exit gate and leave, so we'd have to estimate their loads. Now, you have no choice, you have to weigh yourself in, and you have to weigh yourself out on the out scale, so it gives you more exact weights of what we are bringing in and out. So we aren't gonna be paying more to KDAG than what we anticipated before, so. And that is the end of my report for the year.
Questions for Megan?
One question. As you go up another, what, fifteen feet?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet on that south one?
Mm-hmm.
Then you have an, you're gonna have another pit open, aren't you?
Yes. Cell eight.
Is there a way to utilize this, two ways? As winds go up, you're gonna be higher up, more of it's gonna go everywhere, it just can't be helped, okay?
Correct.
Can you, is there, is there a way that you could use both this one, when it's real windy, and the higher one, when it's not, or do you have, are you gonna have to have extra fences around that top part, or what?
Well, so, there's, there's answers to both of that. So historically, we have always, every four years, we, we have to build, well, we, we had to build cells. Now that we're permitted to go vertically in the air, we've got cells eight, nine, and ten still to get through. Cell ten is a cap, basically, over the whole facility, which is years down the road, but eight and nine, yes, we will have that, that cell eight is going to be constructed this fall. So in the spring, you know, we'll be able, historically, we, we used to have a cell where it was lower than the other cells. We were able to go down lower this year, just with the projects we've had going on, construction, everything fell, at the same time, we didn't have that option to do last year's cell eight. We weren't ready for it yet, meaning, based off of tonnages. So, yes, for the next couple of years, we'll have that option to be in the lower areas when the winds are, in the spring, or, you know, tend to be windier. But eventually, you're gonna be up in the air, we're gonna have to get even taller fences than the temporary movable fences that you approved earlier, a couple months ago this year, that are thirty to thirty-five foot tall, to help reduce the litter that is blown when you're up higher in the air.
I'd be curious to know how much the county could possibly save if we didn't have everybody using plastic sacks. It would be interesting to see how much those plastic sacks cost the county. I'm not, I'm not all that green, but I think absolutely that, that's something that need to be considered, is it?
Is that what blows the majority?
Yeah. We did do, it's been probably eight, nine years ago, we did a program where, when we came up with, when they first started out with the reusable bags, we went around to the local businesses in Reno County, and they donated, you know, those reusable bags from Dylan's, and at the time, Target was here, Kmart was still here, and they donated a bunch of those, and we passed them out when people would come across the scale to encourage to use reusable bags. I mean, unfortunately, not everybody's gonna be that way and use reusables, but yes, the most thing that blows out there is plastics, plastic sacks, the, you know, the sacks you get from Dylan's or Walmart. Those are the first thing that likes to blow away.
I won't ask anymore.
Do the, some people buy biodegradable trash bags? Do those blow as much?
They blow the same. They will biodegrade faster, but they blow the same, the same amount. And unfortunately, we have had windier days.
The reality is, you can't get rid of the blowing.
Correct. It's the nature that we live in, unfortunately.
Okay, I, I've got a question on your chart that's up here. You said we'll be paying the state more, but the way I read this chart, for March and April, you're showing less tonnage.
No, I said, we won't be paying the state more, we were, you and I had that discussion that we, hopefully, we didn't-
What did you hear, Ron?
Won't.
Won't? Okay.
Sorry, I gotta have to, see, I did hear that, even my hearing, maybe I'm closer, though.
Every month, we have to pay, we do tonnage fees that we have to run to KDAG every month, and we pay that dollar per ton.
I, I heard you say that we'll be paying the, paying the more, okay.
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A very good report.
Thank you.
Excellent information, quality information, and I guess, I just think that the public needs to know that we have many departments in the county, most of our departments are very, very well-run. Megan's is very well-run, she knows what she's doing. We, we do need to do a better job on the blowing of materials into our neighbors' properties and all, but overall, this is a department that is, is doing a very good job for the citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellers. Thank you, Megan. The, are you working with the folks that are trying to determine how to mitigate fire issues? Like, I know, like, brush is a big part of that, like, are you involved in those conferences?
Adam and I actually had a conversation yesterday in regards to that topic, and he's, yeah, we've been working together, he had emailed me yesterday, and I actually talked to him on the phone, and kind of gave him some ideas and maybe some options to go with.
Great. In regards to the fire materials that were brought in, did we charge for that?
No.
It was all, so, all the stuff that Voat brought in, we didn't charge them?
Correct.
Okay.
And if we were charging, we are going to start charging for our construction demolition fee that you had approved, we're doing it, starting it, the plan is June first, we were waiting on equipment to get in and updating our software, but even if that was a situation, something like this were to happen again, you would have the authority, I believe, to, you know, just like the state, they waived the fees, we could do something like that.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, there was no charge.
Okay, great. And then, there was a, a small debate amongst the commission on how we were gonna assess rates in the future, and I thought we had talked about maybe there was a rate study or a rate conversation, or maybe it just, there was not consensus to even talk about it, but, like, I, I was wanting to go down the conversation- But, like, I, I was wanting to go down the conversation of assessing the residential fees to, like, charge by the lid or something, the poly cart. That way, it's, it doesn't look like a tax because right now it shows up on the tax rolls and it's kind of expensive. And it's, it's a, it's an odd fee-based item to be on, on a tax statement. So did we, did that just get, there was no consensus to even talk about?
Yeah, we haven't really, I don't think, been given the full direction to change how we.
Can we talk about it?
It was, it's been mentioned.
I know that we discussed last year when we came for increases in solid waste user fees, we kept the residentials at 96 and then the commercial revenue user fees increased. There was discussion on, you know, how, how that can be adjusted to where, you know, we are starting to charge this year a tipping fee for construction demolition. And then after we go through this year, maybe next year to look at how that looks on paper and for everybody to look at it in discussion for.
That's right. Because, because I did some math and it could have been incorrect, but it looked like there was a, like, the proportions were incorrect and we were actually taking in a lot more commercial waste. And the proportion of commercial revenue versus residential revenue was.
We, we left the residentials.
Like, it was, so the residential rates are, are paying more of the share of waste coming into the facility than the commercial is.
Basically, yeah. I mean, that's what, we discussed it last year. That's why we left the residential rate at the same amount and increased our, our user fee for the commercial. Now for 2023, it was recommended to leave things where we left it for 2022. Give us a year of, you know, half a year, what, construction demolition costs, take all those things into effect and then look for their, what we need to do from that point on.
Next year, you would bring, could you bring up a report that shows waste residential versus commercial compared to revenue residential versus commercial?
Yeah, next year was the, whatever our master plan and with our financial model that we have, that, that'll be easy to determine what, what, what direction we need to go for our budgeting purposes.
And then maybe, maybe at that time, when do the, when do the, the tax bills go out?
In November is when the annual tax statements go on. That's where it's listed on their bill.
So next year, when I come, it'll be for the 2024 year, our budget year.
Do you even want to, do you have any interest in talking about moving that fee off the tax roll and onto the fee that we, we charge the commercial operator, which would just show up? I mean, it would just flow through to the fee on the, the trash bill?
Commissioner, the challenge would be for the ones that live in unincorporated areas, I don't think they get, I don't know how they get billed.
But they don't use it.
Well, that was a discussion that you and I have had. That, I mean, I live in rural area and I, I work at the landfill, but I still have a trash dumpster. So I mean, there, there are some people that do.
What do you do? What do you do?
I have a, I have a trash dumpster that is built up.
You pay a commercial operator?
For the, for the pickup.
That's, you charge based on whether you have a dumpster or not, that's.
Many, there's many different types of fees for out in the rural area.
Yeah.
You can choose to have, for the most part, not always, but you can choose to have a cart and you can choose to have it picked up once or twice a month. You can choose to have two carts. You can choose to have a small dumpster or a larger dumpster, and they all have different fees for the pickup.
Just take, just charge it by the revenue then? It's just a fee?
That, then you're looking at just basically a tipping fee. That's where that would lead on to. That's, that's a discussion on that. It's what you're, exactly what you're referring to is a tipping fee.
Basically, I mean, if, it solves itself if, if you just charged the truck that picked it up a fee to dump it. Like, they're going to figure out how to collect the fee from the person producing the trash, period. And then, and then the fee is associated with the person producing the trash versus this weird tax that's on everybody's tax.
Well, then how do you charge the person that brings the trash out in their pickup?
It's a benefit of living in Reno County.
Well, that doesn't seem like to me a fair way to.
Well, I tell, I tell you what, like, the only time that fee is on there is if you have a cart, right?
No.
Yes. Well, for residential.
Are you talking, our, our user fee current now? If you, if you own a home in Reno County, you pay a user fee. Yeah.
I, I think that argument, you've got to reconsider that. That's such, that, that ignores the bigger problem. Like, you're, every time I hear, that's the argument why we don't assess it where it's created. I can tell you the commercial side's still way messed up. I know it is. Like, I've been involved in that and I bet you have 50% inaccuracy as related to what size a cart is in there versus what the fee is. Like, I had it, I experienced it on our properties. So I, like, how do you do that? Like, how do you know what a commercial building has today as far as the size of dumpster?
We get the list from the haulers that haul for them.
When?
First of the year.
So if you change something?
If you change it mid-year, it doesn't get changed until the following year.
Yeah, I, it's, it's just ripe for inaccuracy.
You know, in my three years of being on the county commission, I've not had one person call me saying that they feel that they're being treaded upon like you are up in Bueller, you know?
I've had one person.
We have had calls, but when, like, when we address it, it gets fixed.
If somebody thinks it's inappropriate, you'll least investigate them.
And we do, and we can go back up to three years. And we, and there are times that we've had to go back and refund up to three years.
Why not just make the program work correctly instead of having this, you know? The, the only argument is that, oh, somebody may not pay their fair share. Like, they're paying their taxes, they're paying their fair share. Like, I, I think it's short-sighted not to consider, like, putting the cost where the waste is being produced. The, the weight's not now, it's not.
And on this topic, I would say it would definitely be a work-study session to discuss things if it does come down to that.
So maybe if I call the sheriff out, I should pay a fee?
I, not, I'm not even going to respond to that.
Barton County, where I also work, they do tipping fees. So, I mean, there's, there's two systems and they're both, they both work. I mean, they're, they're both have, they have pros and cons to both of them. So what, what you're discussing is a tipping fee, I think.
It is.
So we hear taxes are too high, okay? That's, and you've heard that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so what you're not, what you're not putting together is that they see the tax bill and a hundred bucks, 120 or whatever it is, every year is related to trash. And it's, it's a user fee. It looks like property tax. Like, that's an easy way to, like, reduce the confusion associated with high tax by putting it on the trash bill where it belongs, not on the tax bill.
But we all hear that taxes are too high. The county last year lowered the total taxes that were on our tax bill. Did anybody get any compliments from any taxpayer saying that it was a lower bill?
I, I think we need to look at this in a study session.
Okay.
Rather than right now. And we can look at this as we get more data from Megan.
Can you, when can you put that together?
Well, you'll have to give us till the end of this year. It'll be, it'll be beginning of 23.
Why?
To get accurate full year data from, we're charging revenue coming in proceeding construction demolition.
Let's take the current residential fee. We don't need the next, I mean, you can always adjust it later. Can you just come up with like a pro forma fee, like, based on?
And Megan, do you have that from SCS? Kind of what they were looking at when they did the fee study?
Different, the difference, the different amounts.
Going to tipping fee and what you need residential.
Take, take the revenue we have today and tell the operators, put it on the bill or whatever you got to do, but it's going over there and see what. Can, Patrick, can we charge a percentage of, of kind of like a usage fee based on their revenue of residential?
You talking about revenue of the operators or are you talking about? I have not seen that done. I think most places, you still, I mean, and this is a little bit off the cuff, but I think, I think the other option is you have a landfill that charges a tonnage fee for the operators who dump there. And then those, then they have to run their business backwards and figure out how much they have to charge the customers. So probably if you did an overhaul like this, the other stakeholder to really be involved would be those operators so they understand what they're going to be called on to do if you make an overhaul.
Normally on a tipping fee, if you're a landfill that has a strictly only a tipping fee, let's say you come in, you pay when you come in, those tipping fees are normally a lot larger, so a lot larger than what we would pay now. If you take and break down the user fee of what a residential pays now compared to what if we went to a tipping fee, we're only at the $20. I'm, don't quote me on that number, but the $20 per ton, $21 per ton, it would be probably well over $40 to $45 per ton as a tipping fee at the gate. Your construction demolition fee is always lower because it's not as costly to operate a construction demolition site. But those are the things that, yes, Patrick's right, we have to get the haulers involved to know what they're, what they would charge so it give us accurate information to know exactly what that tipping fee would be.
If you change this to a tipping fee, if you change it to something else, then those of us who live out in the rural areas will, will have, calling Megan every day for people that don't want to pay that fee, tipping fee. We're going to get it dumped in our right of ways. I guarantee you.
Okay. That is a possibility. I, I know.
Can we do this? Just, you guys are arguing without even getting the information to make a decision.
But you're, you're not listening to Ron. Is if you start charging a tipping fee?
You're not.
You're going to have trash dumped in the, in the ditch.
You're not listening to what I'm proposing. What I'm proposing is you take the commercial operators only. Like, if, 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 if you don't have a poly cart or you're not paying for trash service, you're free to go as a residential, as a resident of Reno County to go dump your trash for free. I'm not suggesting to change that. Like, I get the argument that, you know, people won't want to dump their trash.
If I pay for the trash guy to pick up my trash, then I'm going to start paying for the person that doesn't have their trash picked up.
You can make that argument.
I'm making that argument.
All I'm asking for.
At this point, Daniel, there's two of us that think that we ought to leave it the way it is.
Can you, like, this is so short-sighted. Like, sometimes you guys get into this mode, before you even get the information, you say, no. I'm asking for staff to just come up with something and then you can say no all day long. Like, give it a chance. That's all I'm asking for. If, if you really want to, like, leverage the consensus here to, like, not even listen, you can do that. Is that what you want to do? You don't even want to listen to it.
Well, I haven't heard a real strong.
The whole point of asking staff.
How you're going to do it. You come up with a way of how you're going to do it and now look at it.
I can't do that on my own? I got to have staff.
Study session is for Megan to come up with.
I'm asking you to tell us what it would take to put this fee on the, the operators that dump residential trash, like, approximately what that fee would cost to a residential user. It's not that complicated, just an estimate. Get, get, get an 80% confidence level with it.
Just resident, or you, did you want the, like, the businesses they pick up?
Don't complicate it, just residential for now. Just residential only.
Businesses are paying us a fairly decent number of dollars in taxes for trash pickups. You can't separate.
Throw businesses on there for commercial, for Commissioner Sellers. And let's talk about it in September after the budget. Gives you three months. Out of you, and then, and then, then we, you guys can say no and then we can be done with it. Bring it up again in January when there's a new commission.
Maybe some of us, maybe, maybe some of us aren't listening to the others, too.
Hey, I'm just asking you to have an open mind. Like, we haven't even got the information. So how, I don't know how you listen until you get the information.
I thought we had a lot of information last time.
We had a little bit of it, but it didn't get into the.
Okay.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
Let's take a five-minute reset and then we'll get started again. Financial report, back from our recess.
In your packet is the financial report. And this just shows year-to-date, as, as of April 30th, kind of what we've received and spent for the year. Quick snapshot, looks like revenues are coming in, in good. Expenditures are kind of on schedule for most departments. I didn't really see anything, there's nothing in here that I want to point out specifically, but I will show, going back to a previous discussion. Commissioner Friesen asked about the budget for health insurance and then employee benefits is kind of where we take money and put it into a health insurance fund. So it's not a threat. But this is where the current year's budget is $5 million, $50,000. That's where we budget it in the, every year. So based on what we see, what we have for cash balance of 2021 calendar year and the numbers that has Rick brings, you know, keeps giving updates, that will affect that number for the 23 budget. So that'll be the first time we have a chance to either keep it flat or a decrease based on our expenditure. So just wanted to show you that it is here.
That's quite an improvement over our 10 to 20% increase every year that we were getting.
Yes. Pretty common to have that kind of increase, but we've, you know, with the benefits committee, the consultant, been really aggressive with trying to find savings. Any questions on the financials? Hey, my, and then I have included the monthly department reports. We have one for aging, RCAT, Appraiser, the Automotive Department, County Clerk, Community Corrections, Communications, District Attorney, and Emergency Management. Anything in, any of these departments or other reports that you have questions on?
I'd just like to make a comment on the District Attorney's report. Tom Stanton's been in front of us many, many times and we've promised him relief up there in the fifth floor. And his remarks now say that it's improving, that the, both the odor and the water damage seems to be reciting and I'm glad about that and just hope that we can get his department remodeled here in the near future. I appreciate the fact that he's as understanding as he is because I think it's just taken way too long to get him fixed up up there. And then the second comment I might make is that the County Clerk has told us through the elections commissioner that I believe it's going to cost us $20,000 more to print ballots with a watermark on them. Is that correct number?
We raised it to 20,000, yes.
I, I just, you know, the state is saying that the county spent too much money. I, I just, you know, the state is saying that the county spent too much money and we have too much taxes, too much property tax, and then they go and tell us that we've gotta do something that nobody can say that any election fraud has occurred. And so what's the wise use of that $20,000?
Any other questions on the department reports? Commissioner Hurst?
None.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, I do have a couple other comments. Just, Commissioner Friesen, you had asked for kind of every meeting update on the city-county contracts. Paul Brown, the city attorney, did email at the end of last week to Patrick and I that he is working on those and was hoping to have something, I think this week, something back to us. So hopefully we will get something from the city. And then for the commission, just as a, for notification, next meeting is May 24th. And in talking with Chairman Friesen, we were going to bring, it's kind of at the end of the meeting, whether it's special session, work session, or we just extend the meeting after, kind of after the county commission reports, we will have Darcy from Environmental Health here to kind of give an overview on the septic system, the process to get septic permits, and kind of how we compare with other counties, and then open it up for questions of the commission. So I know that's been brought up at different times, questions, concerns about the process. That way you can hear how Darcy runs the program and then how it compares with other, with KDHE and other counties. So that'll be on the 24th.
I'd kind of like to request that we be able to finish this by noon, because I wanna make the meeting, but I also have a graduation in Texas to go to.
Next, in two weeks. In two weeks or today?
That would be the next meeting.
Okay.
And I'd like to be done by noon today.
I hope so. You guys are a little more agreeable. Randy, you done?
I'm done.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hurst? I, I won't try to take more than 45 minutes.
Forty.
Oh, just wanna report a little bit on, I attended the KCCA meeting last Wednesday up at Salina. I thought it was an extremely good meeting. We had a really good report by Jeff on IT and, and our counselor was there that day. And so excellent report on protection for our, our internet and the options available through CISA, I believe is what it's called. And so, and I think, and I come to find out Randy had heard kind of the same thing at his leadership meeting, or joint meeting.
Right.
And, and our IT department's well aware of, of things that are available for them. I thought that was really excellent. And legislative, both the KCCA represented lobbyists was there as well as our KAC. And they had a really good program in depth with both of them conversing and, and supplementing each other. And the one thing I would say regarding housing programs, the state, if they pass this, Bill 2273, I believe it was, that the state will come in, in areas that won't make the appraised value if they wanna build there or something, but they go to the bank to get an appraisal and the appraisal comes in short, the state will guarantee 20%, up to 20% of the difference. Is that pretty much?
I was, I was starting an online conference at the state did yesterday to get into depth, and then I got interrupted with some other crises that were going on in the building. So I hope to watch it today. But there's, there's a ton of good state programs. I didn't, I didn't miss the details still, I need to get caught up on them.
But that's, that should help with regards to areas that can't find equivocal comps to be able to use or their comps. We require more adjustment that's allowed in a, an appraisal. And so that was the thing. And very good. And after the meeting, I might relay a little comment to Commissioner Friesen from the commissioner in Garden City that attended a, a meeting with him, and I'm supposed to kid him a little bit, and that's Lon out of Garden City regarding the change in compensation for commissioners. I'm supposed to be sure of mentioning that. So when you see Lon next time, you can tell him I did my duty.
Is, was Lon being paid more than we are, or less?
Didn't ask that, okay. A little bit of update on childcare. I attended a Zoom meeting here the other day with the committee task force, and also I met with Penny Stoss, who's pretty much heading up the Hutchinson Regional Hospital's childcare program, and gave me a full packet on their plans, which are quite involved, because I had a question about the 2.1 million for facilities. And so anyway, it was a real good meeting with her and, and explaining on how much that would help the hospital by having that childcare unit out there, although it was a very aggressive plan. And just to utilize that facility for this is, is projected to cost a little more than if you were to build new, but it uses that facility. So anyway, it was quite interesting, very, they plan on possibly up to 140 in different units, and how they broke their units out as far as age of children, as far as how it works. But she's really done a lot of work on that, the hospital has. I'm quite impressed with, with what they've done on that facility out there. And I'm just amazed that, that the city hasn't complained about the state-owned land out here that's been blowing every time the wind goes up and it's covered up most of the fence. I'm just absolutely amazed when I talked to the people out there that didn't know anything at the, at the correctional facility. And I think as we go forward with the gun range, we're gonna be, we need to look at some options there, in my opinion. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Five minutes, sir.
Commissioner Sullivan?
I have nothing.
Wow.
I'll give you my time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The Sheriff's Department relayed and asked the commission to remind the public that Friday, May 13th, Reno County Sheriff's Office will be hosting the annual Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony in front of the Law Enforcement Center in conjunction with the Hutchinson Police Department. Guest speaker, retired Lieutenant Colonel Alan Steckline from the Kansas Highway Patrol. One time he served as interim police officer or police chief here. And statements by the sheriff and Chief Hooper, as well as sheriff's honor guard, and a playing of taps. 11:00 AM, May 13th.
11 o'clock.
Good. I wanted to just note publicly, and I think Randy, you got the message, that some of the media indicated that the live feed for this commission was poor quality, and it seems like something we could solve.
We've looked into that, we've talked with McClellan Sound, but I'll talk with Mike to see if there's something else we can do.
I, I wonder, like, I was confused because I thought it would be the same if you looked at the recorded. And, and that was a kind of a distinguishing point that Rod made this morning, that it's the live feed, not the recording, that's the issue. So I wonder if maybe we just missed it when we were reviewing it. Maybe there's like a bitrate setting or something on the live feed that we could increase. If, I, I wondered just if there was any issue by the other commissioners. I don't mind doing it, I think, I think it's something that we could give to the administrator, things like signing titles and stuff. If he would put in the consent agenda authorization for the administrator to sign those things, and then you could just administratively sign it. So we're not, I think that sometimes some of this stuff looks like stuff you should be able to sign. So unless there's an issue, I'm gonna have Randy just put that.
I believe as long as it's formally delegated, you can delegate that. So we'll give the minutes that you delegate that properly and then you can do it.
And things like contracts that we approve, you know, part of the agenda item might be to authorize you to sign it, and then, then you can sign it and not have to wait for us at the next meeting. So is that okay by you two?
See, we do agree with you on some things. You know, the things that are very agreeable, we agree with you.
That makes sense.
So you're not alone on all of these, okay?
I think that is all of my comments today. Unless you're, Randy has one?
I just wanna, earlier there was a motion on the health, some of the health insurance items. I just wanted to clarify that the intent was for payer matrix to take effect now and the tree of health with the plan year October 1. Just wanna make sure that was okay, that clarification.
And do we have anything on the docket for the fifth Tuesday of this?
Not at this time, I don't believe so.
We might move that study session into the fifth.
Well, the fifth, the fifth is on 31st, which is Memorial Weekend, so we have to pick another day.
It's Tuesday.
Maybe the first day after Memorial, yeah, after the break. If you guys wanna meet that day instead of the 24th.
So the fifth Tuesday, is there a fifth Tuesday?
I thought it was the 31st. Did I look at, is that a?
It is the fifth Tuesday.
That's not Memorial.
The 30th would be.
Are you okay on Tuesday?
Yeah.
We might, we might do that. Okay. I'll, unless there's objection during the meeting.